Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council being held on June 12th, 2005. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members. Asadrian, Rotman, Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
Here, may we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for Thursday, June 12th, 2025, special public meeting of the city council was posted on June 10th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Good morning, Mayor Najarian, Member of the City Council. Again, appreciate you being here on a Thursday morning.
Well, let's, I guess, let's officially read in the items. So, Madam Clerk, would you read item one?
Yes, item one is 2025-2026 budget study session number four, follow-up items from study sessions one through three.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yeah, Mayor Najarian, Member of the City Council, as I was saying, thank you for being here again this morning. This will be our fourth and last study session, a budget study session. This morning, we'll cover a recap of the items that we discussed over the last three sessions, responses to follow-up items that were requested during these sessions, an overview of the five-year forecast again, a brief overview of proposed budget balancing strategies, in other words, potential revenue sources, and review of non-essential CIP projects. And then finally, we'll be seeking council's direction so that we can prepare the final staff report for the budget hearing and adoption scheduled for June 24, 2025. With that, I'll turn it over to John Tocalli, our Assistant City Manager and Acting Finance Director for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. As we enter our 10th hour of budget study sessions, we've kind of come to a juncture where we've talked about pretty much everything there is to talk about in the actual cities, $1.2 billion budget, general fund and all other funds included. Today's, I'm not going to reiterate what the city manager just described, but today, we're really going to be providing an overview of where we've been, where we are, and seek some directions on where we're going. The first few slides that I'm going to fly through is really a restatement of feedback that we've received from council. So, last week, we, actually, at all three of our sessions, to some degree, we've had conversations about revenues. Finally, we were able to whittle down our list of revenues last week to a set of eight, that there was majority consensus to move forward with. You see that up on the screen, have a quarter cent sales tax, commercial vacancy tax, digital billboards, concierge fees, and an increase to the parking fees. While the vast majority of these moving forward would require some level of additional discussion and debate by council in the coming year, as well as actual actions to implement them, there is one where we feel we did get enough adequate feedback from council last week to incorporate in our future budget projections, and that has to do with our parking fees. What we heard last week was that there was general consensus to include parking fees in the budget adoption process. Doing so would increase our revenues by about $1 million, or more specifically, about $968,000. We also talked about our public benefit charge last week. Just a quick recap, because there was quite a bit of conversation around it. We want to basically restate and reaffirm what we believe we heard. That way, there's no confusion moving forward. We talked about the fact that it was a program consisting of 24 individual programs, about $9.3 million total budget. And then there was a little bit of feedback from council. There was a desire that we have less programs moving forward, but ones that are more meaningful in terms of their impact. There was a desire to increase our outreach so that we can connect residents to the PBC programs and rebates through new channels. There was a desire to consider additional lobbying efforts with respect to the Water Conservation Rebate Tax Parity Act, advocating for more EV and e-bike guest drive programs here in the city of Glendale, considering adding the vehicle to home permitting and programming for the low-carbon fuel standards as a research and development initiative, focus on peak shaving and thermostat reduction programs, and a consideration of a microfinancing program for low-income residents as it relates to PBC programs. All in all, this program will be, the $9.3 million will be included in the total citywide budget proposed for adoption, but the feedback that's provided is going to result in GWP going back over the next couple of months, redeveloping and modifying their list and coming back to council at a future date, because like our acting interim general manager said, it is a very flexible set of programs that could be adjusted at any time. Over the course of the last several budget study sessions, a series of questions had arisen. We promised that we would come back and provide a follow-up to them. Some of them were just inquisitive. Some of them may help in the decision-making process. Specifically, there was a question about take-home vehicles, how many we had, how much it cost. We went back. Coincidentally, we had just completed an internal audit related to take-home vehicles. We have a total of 92 vehicles that are take-home, costs annually about $646,000. These are, with respect to anything that's MOU-regulated, it's just the 17 motorcycles in the police department. The remainder are really based on the need to respond back to the operations during emergencies. That's why all you see here is Public Works, GWP, Fire, and Police. There was also a question or a desire to view, or at least learn, about all the citywide leases, property leases, not necessarily ones in the general fund, not necessarily ones that are overseen or engaged in by the community development department, but any lease that the city of Glendale holds, where we generate revenue from. The next few slides has a complete listing of it. We identify not just the location and the actual operator, but we also indicate what the lease-end date is. As you'll see on this particular slide, there's a number of them that are coming up for renewal at the end of December, 2025. Those can most certainly be renegotiated, but moving forward to the next slide, you see that there is a number that are coming due in 2026 and beyond. While they can potentially be renegotiated, those vendors have an option to renew. We would have to go back and look at each individual and to see if it was only at the operator's discretion, or if we had the opportunity to engage in adjustments to the rates. Some of these are long-term leases. As you see, Trader Joe's is there over in Montrose, but there's also a number of them are just, they're just telecommunications towers, where they might be in city parks or in public right-of-way, generating revenue in that manner. There was also a question, a little bit of discussion around animal care services, because it is a rather expensive annual expense housed in the police department. We pay roughly about $1 million a year for our Pasadena Humane Society contract. We are at the tail end of that agreement. It expires, the most recent extension expires in June of 2027. It was capped at a five-year, $5 million agreement with some CPI, but again, even with the CPI, it caps at $5 million. In terms of the statistics, you'll notice the total calls to services have pretty much held firm, about 2,200 calls for service on an annual basis. Some of them are dog impounds, cat impounds, and then calls for wildlife services. We did take the initiative in this research to call around and see what other alternatives may exist. Burbank has an animal care facility near the Costco down there. They did not have the capacity to take on Glendale's work, or needs, I should say. We also contacted LA County, which is the natural next agency. They can provide those services, but their cost for service was about $25,000 less annually than what we currently pay Pasadena Humane. And they also have a increase coming up in July. They were not able to quote us on what that cost would be following that. If there's a desire to discuss this or research this a bit more, it's certainly something we would have to go back and take a much deeper dive in as we get closer to the expiration date, which if it's June 2027, we should start in the next five or six months.
Pause for just a second, John.
I think just on the Pasadena Humane item, provided that it's coming up, what I would like to see is a renegotiation of the contract. I'm not sure what's in the contract that they're upholding, what's not, and at this time, we have a solid figure of how many animals they're servicing per year. It's a good opportunity for us to revisit. It's not necessarily cutting it. I just want to make sure that, number one, we're not overpaying for services that we're not getting, and then ensuring that whatever is in the contract is actually followed through on, because I raise concerns about not seeing, not just the animal care portion of it, but not seeing events and adoptions and the effort that I see being placed in Pasadena, being placed in Glendale.
Noted. That contract is managed out of our police department. I see the police chief nodding his head, so that's certainly something that we'd be looking into.
There were some individuals in the Rancho area that I guess were involved with the, back in the day, Glendale Humane Society, that had noted that they were looking to start something in Glendale. I'm happy to connect them with those residents if there is an interest from staff in revisiting that as you're looking at this contract as well.
Councilmember Garpetian.
Yeah, when this item comes back or the research is done, the calls for service, it says 2,200, 25 calls for services. Is it, did they provide services for 2,200 people? Or is it just the calls that came in? Because that will make a huge difference. If they provided services to 2,200, 25 people, then it's like $500 a call per service, you know? When you divide all the, add them up for five years and $5 million, it's like $500 a call. So, I just want to thank you, chief.
Good morning, everyone. Councilmember, so to answer your questions, when we say 2,100, just short of 2,200 calls for service, it's just a call for service. The, how many people were impacted by that, if there was contact with an animal, it's going to vary. But that number that you're looking at, that is just the request for service.
Got it. Okay, I think that's something we need to understand, so.
Isn't the impounded numbers, aren't those the ones that would be, that they actually took care of after the call?
No, they would also be responding to other things, like dogs barking, dogs that are loose, where they identify them and get them back together with their owners before they're impounded.
Correct. Picking up of, you know, dead animals, dead birds, squirrels, things of that nature. So, there's a lot there, but the 287 numbers, the dogs actually impounded.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. And I think one of the last follow-up items that we had was with respect to the conversations we've had around overtime, specifically public safety overtime. I've noted on a couple of, well, at this point, several occasions, that one of the big drivers this year with respect to our expenditures was the fact that we needed to increase the overtime budget for the police department. Before we get to the police department, I think what we're showing here is an illustration on what's really driving that need. Historically, what you see down here is five years' worth, really four years' worth of budget to actials as it relates to overtime. You'll notice that in 2122, we had budgeted about $6.4 million for the fire department overtime, but they ended up spending $10.7 million. And those little stacked colors represent what those, what the overtime was actually spent on. The vast majority of it, when you see MOU, is constant staffing in the fire department. Then you have work comp, so you're utilizing that purple color to backfill when somebody is out on work comp, that's generating overtime. There's reimbursables, that's going to be our mutual aid agreements with agencies, and then a little bit out there on mandatory training. So, in 2122, there was roughly a $4 million gap between what was budgeted and what was actually utilized. And that trend continues. Year after year, we've always budgeted less than what we've actually spent. And the police department, it's a very, very similar story. We budget, we were budgeting about $4.5 million, and we were spending close to $7.8 million, $7.5 million in 2122. Even though we knew we were spending more on overtime, we didn't necessarily adjust for it. You would ask, why? Is that prudent? The answer is yes and no. The yes portion is, we've been in financial challenges for quite a while now. But the way we were able to manage all these years was because even though we were spending more on overtime, we had vacancies to backfill or to back that expense. That's why we were staying within our budget. The big challenge comes in this particular slide, on slide 15, in fiscal year 2425. This was the year that we maintained a $5.3 million overtime budget. We spent $9.8 million, but for once, in the last couple of decades, we were fully staffed. So, we didn't have that cushion of vacancy savings to backfill it. Now that we're maintaining a fully-staffed police department, we're forced to acknowledge what our actual overtime usage is, which is why we're proposing in this budget to increase it by $4 million. We're not doing that on the fire side yet, because fire still has vacancies. We feel there's still a year's worth, at least, of capacity without, you know, putting further strain on the budget. But we're going to come to a point in fire, once we fully staff up, when we're going to have to accomplish the same task moving forward. We do foresee some additional expenditures in our future.
Let me ask a question, or would you rather just continue through?
No, that's fine.
Section by section, it's a lot.
Okay, so let me just ask you a question here. So, as we, and it involves the police department, as we implement the additional 25 officers, are we expanding our level of service so that overtime would still be used? Or are we using, in some manner, that extra, those extra officers to backfill overtime, that which was previously overtime? Do you understand my?
I do, and it's a great question. And to respond to it, I'll say it's both, and it's going to be a balance of both. A big portion of the overtime expenditure at the police department for the last several years has been exactly what you just said, staffing, to deal with minimum staffings, be it in patrol, communications, the custody facility, so on and so forth. As our staffing numbers go up, that piece of the overtime is going to naturally disappear, or at least be minimized because of it. But it won't entirely do it, because the other part of it is, there is something to be said about now, some of the overtime that maybe sometimes is nondiscretionary or is associated with MOUs as the department grows, that overtime piece grows. So, overtime has been budgeted here. We've been spending it up here, and what I'm proposing and what the goal will be moving forward is that we're going to kind of meet it in the middle, if you will, as the department grows. So, as the Assistant CM touched on, looking to add that $4 million, which would get to us to a place of a roughly $8 million budget, which would drive us down a couple, $2, $3 million from where we've been the last couple of years, again, in conjunction with the growth of the organization, if that makes sense.
It does. And speaking for myself, council hasn't weighed in on this, but I would like to see a significant reduction in the overtime as a result of increasing our bodies. And I know there's, there's a lot of moving parts to that. You've got to determine your scheduling, deployment plan, level of service, et cetera. But I would hope that, I wouldn't want to ratchet it up to a certain level of service, and let's say we've got five of those officers out, have an additional increase in overtime. So, just my very broad thought, and I would, I'll leave the details to you and to the city manager and your staff.
Understood, and coming straight from me, that's a commitment that I've made to the CM and the Assistant CM and how we're going to get that done. The only thing I will just put out there is just keep in mind that sometimes, for public safety, police and fire, there's going to be dynamics that are out of our control. This year alone, the fire emergency, that's a significant overtime. The current challenges that we are seeing in the region around civil unrest and staffing up and certain things like that, as well as we have had, even in my relatively short time here, a growth in community events and the demand that that calls for, from our public safety staff. But understood, and that is absolutely a priority for me and my staff as we move forward, that we're going to, we're going to drag that number down.
Thank you. Okay, if there's anything else on the overtime issue?
Not on the overtime, but I have some odds and ends before that.
From previous?
Yeah, yeah.
Previous?
I've been just holding.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Just if we're going to pause here, I'll just start from the top. On the revenue, I think the commercial vacancy tax, I want to emphasize, that was really just to understand whether that's something that is an issue in the community that we need to address. And I think that's primarily not for revenue generation. That would be for activating our storefronts, right? Just wanted to make sure that that was understood. And public benefit charge, I appreciate, sounds like the things that we all said are reflected here, so I want to thank you for that. And interested, very interested to see what GWP comes back with. On the property leases, I support efforts to renegotiate. I would, though, ask us to be cautious with any of the nonprofits on this list, the arts organizations like the Armenian Film Society, and also the small businesses like Burartu Coffee. You know, you've got Museum of Neon Art, the Center for Armenian Arts. I think we can renegotiate many of them, but I don't want to be doing it on the back of some of these small businesses that we could potentially lose, and that we've had for a long time, or these arts organizations. That's my comment on that. Let's see if I have anything else. No, I think everything else, I agree with what I'm hearing from my colleagues. That's it.
Okay.
Alex, anything else up to this point in the presentation?
I have a few.
Yes.
So, on the revenue consensus, there were many smaller items that were part of the list that you had brought forth. I recall it as being supportive of them, but not looking at it as a priority, given the smaller amounts. I just want to make sure that those things just don't fall off the list. It was, there was, I mean, even I, when I was going through them, I said, fine with the rest, but it's not, it's not necessarily something that should be, I don't want any of the, even if there's small increments of revenue that we can generate, I would like for us to take a look at. It wasn't a blanket, we don't want it. It was more, we're in a financial situation where we need to look at the bigger items first. But there was a consensus from this council on the smaller items that were there. It was just, we just kind of brushed it off.
Okay, we'll definitely go back and take a look at the video again. What we did was, we had a couple of different people in the audience who was tallying up what there was, at least three individuals in support of, and this is how we narrowed it down to this. But there's absolutely no reason why we can't go back and take a closer look at it and kind of see if it was just more of a broad brush. I'm okay with it. That would just mean, that would be a one count towards those that may not be on this list now.
I think we were rushing through it, and it would be helpful if staff maybe just reset the list, and as we're adopting the budget, we can confirm, if you want, a solid, again, I think that, that particular session was, we're crammed, and we're just trying to like rush through and didn't.
What we, what I can commit to doing perhaps is, during the budget hearing, I can show the entire list, and then I could do a side-by-side with what we heard in terms of consensus. If there's any changes at that point, well, we can deal with it then, so we have something concrete moving forward. That way, we're not revisiting 20 items and talking about, you know, certain things that are lightning rods in the, in the community unnecessarily.
Okay.
So, just so, just so I'm clear on it, that these are considerations. They're not going to be, I mean, obviously, no time to adopt them in this budget, but things that you believe that we were interested in, maybe some left off the list that a council member mentioned, but just planning ahead as to what sort of steps we need to take to start implementing, is that?
That's an accurate statement. This is what we believe in that direction.
A bigger list.
We.
Perhaps leave, there were a few that we were all dead on, I think. So, leave those dead ducks out, but the ones that maybe had a little bit of interest, so we can think about those comprehensively.
I think I'm talking about more of the smaller items that were there, because I remember.
Like, remind me.
I can, I can look it up.
Yeah, as an example, mayor and council members was restaurants at our parks, kiosk, digital kiosks, and.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, like things like that.
Yeah, stuff like that.
They were small amounts, and we said, okay, let just, but these aren't big items.
Right. So, we will continue looking into those options, and during the course of the year, if they're practical, feasible, and manageable, then we'll bring reports back to council for direction.
I think my only request on any of these items that are big-ticket items is prioritizing revenues over policy matters that are coming in front of the council, given I would like to see where we're at when the budget comes next time, for us to be able to readjust any decisions that we make during the budget adoption.
Okay.
One other thing on this, I just noticed, I don't see TOT on here. I thought we did discuss raising the TOT.
Yeah.
Again, I mean, we'll go back and look at it, and we'll bring it back during the budget adoption. I had a couple. I had a couple different people kind of tally it up independently, and this is what we came up with, but perhaps we missed something.
I thought TOT was something we all were open to considering, we know we're a little bit, we're at the higher end, I guess, already, but we were open to seeing what's possible. And I think there was also, at least, I know I made a comment, on what we can do to create more incentives to get, to get additional hotel development, because that, you know, that could make a big impact.
You are correct, Councilmember Brotman, and, and this is a list of the highest potential revenue generating items, but that, that was part of the discussion, and it was looked upon favorably, so we haven't given up on that, so.
And then the property leases. So it looks like some of these are part of the Artsakh Creative Program, that's what I'm seeing, and I don't want that, I don't want that program touched, and for us to go renegotiate, because these are kind of part of a program. But I'm not sure which one of these is part of the program. So if they are part of the Artsakh Creative Program, then I'm not interested in looking at it, or altering that program.
Right, fair enough, Councilmember, yeah. Basatian, the request, the request that came in, was presented to share a list of all the properties that we lease, and this is the comprehensive list, but we understand your position with Artsakh Creative Pop Ups, and the intention is not to terminate those.
I think what I'm more looking at is, if we haven't looked at any contracts in a while, or there's opportunity with private entities outside of that program, for us to get market value, unless they're providing some community benefit. And I have asked about Mona previously, and for us to have a discussion on that. It's now noting 2030. I thought it was, I thought we were going to have a discussion before that contract was renewed, so was the contract renewed?
The contract has not been renewed. We haven't received a request to renew the contract, so that's, that effort is still underway, and will be revisited.
Okay, all right. Can you, can Mr. Calvert identify which ones are the Artsakh Creative? No, I don't think so.
Mayor and council members, any of the ones listed at 121, 123, 125, and 127 are part of the Artsakh Creative space. We do have one more that I believe is currently vacant, that is not being used, but it needs rehabilitation first.
Okay. And then, so the ones that, there were rumors on, about the locations on Brand Boulevard, those are not ours? The bridal shop and all of that is not ours?
We would need to go back and pull the, or take a look at the list, this was just what, what we were able to call, right, when we received the request, we could see what other properties are out there, but I do believe we have some others that are floating around that didn't make this list.
Okay, so can we, can we get the full list? Thank you. That's all I got. Sentiment's the same as Mayor Najarian on the overtime. Okay.
Yeah, very quickly. Page four, commercial vacancy tax, I think we need to define what commercial is. Currently, office buildings are considered commercial, and their market is, market has tanked, they have 30, 34% vacancy. Large office buildings, some on 50%. If the goal is the retail or storefronts, I know there were a couple of storefronts that they were not leased, or took too long for them to get it up and running, but I don't think we need to make a policy for two or three examples, because our retail vacancy is less than 1% in Glendale. So you don't want to start taxing people for things that, it's out of their hands. On the ground, this is our city properties, I am for it, as I mentioned in the past, but mostly in downtown, to start in downtown, see what kind of a revenue we'll generate, and what kind of a demand we will get. On public benefit charge, that focus efforts on peak shaving and thermostat reduction, I think we have that, and I have it, I didn't see a difference in, in my, in my bill, so we need to look at it and see what can be done to make it, make it more efficient, because currently it isn't. At $9.3 million that we're generating from this benefit, public benefit charge, I think it has to be spent more on, I think the goal was to help people who are a little bit less fortunate than us, and they're in need of some sort of assistance from the city, so I think we need to concentrate on helping them on their, on their monthly bills. As far as Artsakh Street goes, I don't know what that creative program is, I would like to get briefing on it, I think it was passed when I wasn't here, and I want to know when it started, and what are the results of this program? Has it been successful? Because I, I, they were never open there, I see some, some art pieces behind the storefronts that shows that, you know, maybe the place is not vacant, but I don't know what kind of programs we had over there. But in general, I like to see what the results of this, this program is, and for, when, when this comes back, I'd like to have the, I'd like to know the square footage of the storefronts, as to how, what the square footage is for every, every store, and how much we, you know, it tells me how much we're charging, but some pay very, very little, some pay nothing, so we keep talking about generating revenue, but the stores are sitting there vacant, and we don't get any funding for it.
I can give you a really quick recap on the Councilmember Garpatian, this is a program that we started, I believe it started right after the pandemic, around 2020, 2021. The idea was, because that street was being considered for an overall kind of reconstruction and change, we didn't have a lot of interest in those spaces, people didn't want to lease them, because they knew we were going to basically dig up the street, or make a lot of whole-scale changes that may impact the foot traffic that goes through there. As such, we have an application process for small businesses that are looking to try to get a foothold in the city of Glendale, kind of get started with, with the retail storefront, and then hopefully move on to something potentially larger. Typically, we run the leases for about six months, it is a free rate right now. If it's successful, and has generated the foot traffic and the type of activity that we think goes along with the design of that street, we do allow them to renew and stay longer. The plan is that, once a decision is made going forward about Artsakh itself, and whether or not it goes over the renovation, we would come back with a specific item to council to ask what you would like to do with this, these spaces. That could include continuing this kind of program, or it could be tenant improvements that could allow us to intentionally lease them to tenants that are befitting of, of that redesign. But right now, because there was a lot of uncertainty around that street, there wasn't a lot of interest in the space. Right now, there's only one that is vacant, as I mentioned, and that one is in need of about $100,000 of rehabilitation at this point, there are mold issues, flooring issues, ceiling issues, HVAC.
Okay, I, I understand that, but if, we all know that some of our projects take a few years to get it approved, to go through the process, RFP, council approval, so these storefronts are, they're hotcakes these days. If you put it up on LoopNet, or on Market, and have someone market it, or what have you, City Market says it, they will, they will, they will be rented overnight. I'm not saying just take it away from the artists and give it to someone else, but if you want to generate revenues, they, they will be rented. Three-year, you give someone three-year lease, they come in and pay top dollar for it. But that's something, when it comes out, we can, we can, we can discuss that, that option as well. On page 11, Hyatt Place is paying $32,000 a year on Orange Street Parking Garage, this is part of the development agreement, that they pay about?
That is correct, Councilmember Garpatian.
$100 a year?
Correct.
And how many parking spaces do they have there?
Off the top of my head, I, I won't be able to tell you.
Okay, no problem. One last thing, the Humane Society, I know the, we may not even, in our lifetime, use it, but when you need it, it's a, it's a very, very important service they provide. We had an incident in our neighborhood, a dog got hit on, on Kenyatta Boulevard, we didn't know who to call. The first call was to Humane Society, they showed up in half an hour, they picked it up, they washed the street, and they did all the work that they needed to do. It was a, it was a sad scene, but there was someone over there to help us. So I don't know if it's worth $5 million, but if we can negotiate it or what, but this is a very important, essential service that they provide, in case you need it. You may not need it, and I hope we won't need it, but it, it, it happens, and when it happens, they're there, so that's all I have. And on overtime, chief knows where I stand, I think I, I agree with the sentiment of my colleagues, that if we have more and more officers, I think our overtime should be reduced somewhat, so that's all.
Okay, did you get all that?
Yes.
I didn't know, there's people out there, like, taking tallies, I said this, Dan said that. Okay, I'll be careful what I say then. Okay, so why don't you go to the next segment, John? I think we asked most of the questions, although if, if anything does come up that you've forgotten, I'll, I'll let anybody come back and reopen a subject.
Sure. Next segment is council requests. During the first budget study session, we listed a grouping of all the different requests that have come in over the last year, year and a half, that haven't been funded, or any action necessarily taken upon to date. This is just a recap of what that list entailed. Important to note that none of these are in the proposed budget, some of these would certainly have to come back for further discussion by the city council, and appropriation of funds to, to implement. With?
Since these are, these are unfunded, how would you describe it? Wishes, unfunded projects, or?
We title them?
Projects, some are, some are programs, some are capital. I want to throw in the Aquatic Center, that I think was an issue that I had put on the discussion agenda many years ago. I keep getting bumped down, you know, with everything that comes in, but I just want it on there, I mean, obviously, there's no commitment, but at some point, when we're talking about wish lists, or perhaps grant funding opportunities that may appear, we could probably forget the federal grants at this point, but state, just to have it on, on the books, as, as that was a desire, at least by one of us, to, to look into. Yes, council members?
So as I look through these, some of these are items that are supposed to come back for further discussion, and then others were supposed to be part of a conversation during the budget session. I'll, just as a few examples, the Residential Rent Relief Program was one, council staffing was another, that we had said, okay, let's, let's look at it during the budget session, right? The city employee childcare services, I'm not, when I proposed that, I wasn't looking for that to be something that's funded through the city. It was supposed to be an item that's supposed to be coming back for us to look at, if we, for example, can get space somewhere in the city, and then look at contracting services, and then whatever we end up charging, or that entity ends, ends up charging, I was, I was never looking for it to be something that's, we're, you know, all of a sudden hiring childcare service providers ourselves, and putting it into our budget. So I think, I think those are, those were the ones that I actually remembered. The CSW Funding Enhancement made me remember the discussion on the staffing, for the, the full-time staffing. I went back and watched a meeting, there was a consensus that you were going to work out something with the city clerk's office, we did give the green light for the full-time staffing, but you guys were going to figure out, like, what level of that position it was going to be. And then, because I think one of the comments you had made was, maybe we can do it as such that it doesn't have a budget impact, and I just want, I, I want to make sure that that one-time full-time staffer that the council had approved is part of the budget that we're discussing, because that was already approved, and given direction, you guys were just going to figure out what the?
Councilmember Basatian, the direction was to, for the city manager to work with the city clerk, and to establish a potential funding source, and we have started that conversation a couple of weeks ago, or two, three weeks ago, and we're waiting on some information that the city clerk was going, is working on, and going to provide, and we'll, we'll take it from there. I have a couple of, what's that?
What do you mean, potential funding source?
Well, some, it has to come out of a source, whether it's general fund or not, and?
Oh, as in within the budget?
Yes.
Okay. I do want to make sure that we're walking away with that full-time staffer, that was the, that was the direction of the council. It was two separate, I went and watched it last night, at like 1:00 in the morning, it was, one part was, the two of you were going to work out a full-time staffer, and then I think there was discussion, because the current staffer was like doing something else 50% of the time. I said I wasn't interested in anything else that's happening in the city clerk's office, I was just looking for a dedicated staff member, and Mr. Brotman, and Mr. Garpatian. Mr. Garpatian actually also added that, let's talk about programming during the, so when I saw the CSW Funding Enhancement, I'm seeing that more of a conversation around programming, and not the staffing, because the staffing was already something that the, the council had given direction on. And because it's fresh in my memory, Mr. Garcia, at the meeting, you had also noted, this was March 18, that it would take six to eight weeks for the other portion of it to come back, it's been a pretty?
Before, before the city attorney response to that question, I'd want to state that, I believe, as my recollection was, the full-time, direction for a full-time staff member to manage that commission, as well as the programming, was predicated on additional programs and funding to pay for the additional programming.
That wasn't the case, Mr. Glonian?
We'll have to, we'll have to go back and double check, but?
I think I remember that, that's when we were having a lively back and forth, and I, and I suggested that, that the city clerk and the city manager get together and find out what sort of funding, is it, was that the same meeting?
There was two, there was two parts to it. One was the programming and funding, the discussion was around, I think it was like administrative analyst versus administrative assistant, and I had, I had said, I don't care what the title is, all I care about is having somebody that full-time oversees that. There was a commitment from this council, and for you guys to work that out, and that, have that be incorporated, Mr. Glonian.
Okay, Councilmember Basatian, yes, and we have started that conversation, but again, my belief is, a full-time staffing, unless the, there are additional programming that council approves for that commission, as it stands, with limited, or less than what they currently do, and the, the programs that they have, the justification for a full-time staff doesn't make sense.
I want the conversation was, Mr. Glonian?
Well, again, if the, we, we will, and the direction, I've checked, I've checked that motion, the direction was, as stated, for the city clerk and I to get together, and we have, we've had the conversation, but I don't know how we justify a full-time staffing if the programming hasn't increased.
So Mr. Brotman, you know what, hold on.
Again, that, that may be the case.
For email.
Side question, in terms of timing?
Right.
Is, was this something that, that could have been implemented in this budget cycle? Or are we looking at something several months down, was it a budget amendment?
Additional programming?
Well, whatever we're talking about right now, I guess my question is, how time-sensitive for this budget, which is going to be adopted in two weeks? for this budget, which is going to be adopted in two weeks, is the determination of this?
Additional staffing, basically.
Okay. So it wasn't a great question. So forget it. I'm not getting, I withdraw the question. I withdraw the question.
We were supposed to, I actually said I'm not interested in having the programming discussed right now. I.
The budget study.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to walk away from here then because it's going to be the last session. I have Mr. Galanians and my comments and Mr. Garpetian's that I clipped yesterday at 1:00 in the morning, Mr. Najarian. So the direction was there for a one-time, full-time staffer.
I don't think I was there.
You were there. Not, 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 not on the, not on the item, but there were three folks on this dais that requested that.
Okay. Well, let's, since, since you've got it clipped, let's, how long is it though?
Two and a half minutes or three minutes?
Okay, that's good. I lose attention. Sound please. Come on. You kidding me? We gotta have, I'm sure that's the best part of this.
Can direct programming, write grants and get money?
I see your passion. I see your passion.
You're making me do this because full-time is now we have this conversation.
Somebody that doesn't need a supervisor to sign off on.
Okay, start, start it up.
A one full-time position of somebody that doesn't need a supervisor to sign off on everything that they're doing, that can direct programming, write grants and get money.
There is correct. $36,000 is a drop in the bucket for our, our budget. But I like this program, this report to go back to the city manager. City manager and the city clerk sit down together and see what they can do, how much money they can allocate today, how much they're going to bring in two months or three months when our, our, our budget time is. Let's vote for it and move forward. But I think the budget is about a month or two. We can put all of it in our budget and, and, and vote for it at that time.
Things like mentorships, appearing at functions, and, and just having the capacity to work with other organizations around the city. Look at the staffing model. It doesn't work right now. We have a chicken and an egg situation. We need the commission to work on a strategic plan, but we can't really do that with the resources that we have now. So we got to kind of take one step now. And, and so my position would be, let's put a full-time person, but there should be a full-time person. And that full-time person should work with the commission to develop a strategic plan and then come back and tell us, do they need more? What, what the work requires? There may be more needed. I don't know what kind of funding is needed. Let's let, let's take that first step and then let's see where we go from there. So that's where I am. I support the expanded powers. I support the monthly meeting. I support a dedicated position.
But based on the comments that, let's approach this in a, in a phased plan as well as input from the commissioner. Give me an opportunity to work with the city clerk's office to see if council's direction is to have a full-time dedicated staff member to the commission, then we can work something out that may not have a financial impact to our budget. And perhaps we can redistribute some of the other duties of this position.
Okay.
May I say, why come I wasn't on there? Did I say anything? I mean, I don't remember exactly.
But not really. You're like, okay, so you guys are gonna.
Okay.
Yeah. But I also said many other things in that meeting. I also said that the CSW, if the city clerk's office was very busy and they couldn't handle it and they needed more, it could, it could have come back to, I, I think, I still believe that it should go back to the city manager's office because that's how it was handled for decades. And for some reason, it was passed through to city clerk's office. And then now we have, we need more resources, more of everything. I think city, city manager's office can handle this, this commission perfectly. Now we have, we added more people to our management team. Dominique McGurkian is, and everyone else in that office. We have enough manpower to manage this commission. I don't think, I think just the one clip, yes. But I said many other things in that, in that meeting. And one was that I believe, and I still believe that this commission has to be handled by the management team.
Okay. So I'm not interested in where the CSW is housed. Doesn't, this is, that's between the city manager and the city clerk. And if this council wants to have that discussion, then you can go ahead and have that. I'm only talking about the full-time staffing. There was direction given from this dais for them to go have a conversation and for them to come up with the full-time staffing. The rest of the things that you had mentioned were specifically about programming because they were going through, you know, whether it was self-defense, domestic violence. You mentioned something about sports and your daughters. Those were the conversations where we said, okay, the CSW enhancement, I actually thought that that's premature and that we should allow for a strategic plan for the CSW and the staff member to do a strategic plan. And then we can allocate funding after that. But there was direction on having a full-time staff member be part of this budget adoption.
Right. But if, if the.
If you've changed your mind, that's a different story, but.
No, I mean, I, we are entitled to changing our own minds. But if the, after all the meetings are done between the city clerk's office and the city manager's office, if the decision is, because that's city manager's office decision to take that responsibility back to their office. If he decides or the management decides that CSW is going to be handled by management's office, they may not need a, a new staffer in there. They may be able to manage it, program it, manage it well with the, with the staff that they have, with the, with the people that they have. I mean, I, I don't want to put another staff in there because, and the other thing is we need to know what responsibilities they handle at this time and that they cannot manage the CSW. I think there's maybe more work that they can handle at this time. Let them, let them iron it out and, and bring a report back. Maybe the city manager says, no, my office can, can handle it. Yes, Mr. Takhtarian, I mean, you have.
The report, the report did come. And I think the colorful part of that conversation was that I had noted that I brought this up two years ago. I was asked to wait until the budget session. The budget session came, I was asked to hold until the report came. Then the report came. Everyone on this dais said budget session, and here we are. So, you know, I just.
Yes, those are, those are valid points, Councilmember Satrian. And this is why we're having this debate and conversations.
So the CSW enhancement item is separate again from the, the staffing.
I understand. But now we're talking about staffing. And as my last parting comments were, depending, we'll have to figure out what the impact's going to be to our budget with implementation of a full-time staffing. On the other hand, the, the staff member who left was a full-time position. And that, that can be filled by a person right now to handle the, and manage the commission as it stands. But that's the kind of information that I'm, the city clerk and I are working on. I, I need to know what other duties were assigned to that person, what would be the function of this full-time staff member? Will there be enough for this full-time staff member to do? And plus, what would be the impact to our budget?
So again, I don't, I'm not interested in how you guys are resolving that. That's between the two of you. I'm not interested in micromanaging any of the items. All I asked for was a one dedicated staff member for CSW. That's all. So you, where it's housed, who does it? I think one of the issues was the 50% staffer that was assigned to the CSW. I see this time and again, and I mentioned it during that meeting as well, that the efforts were not placed in CSW. And the commission chair also came and spoke in not having enough staff support for that. This council also agreed to expand the powers of the commission, which would require additional meetings, which would require additional staff, which was the conversation around the chicken and egg.
Okay. So if I, if I may just wrap it up, since you personally, Councilmember Satrian, don't care where it housed the staff member, and you posed a question to our city attorney about the timing of the ordinance to expand the, the powers. With all that said, again, I'm not saying we don't necessarily need a full-time staff. All I'm asking is, we've started the conversation. We're going to continue the conversation. If we can manage to handle after the ordinance is in place, the expanded powers with less than a full-time position, that's ultimately the goal, right? And so that, that would be decision between the city clerk and I in the coming weeks.
This item was discussed in March, and both of you had made a commitment on having that conversation so we can have the final one during the budget session, Mr. Galanian. I'm not gonna, I don't want to take away from this, but again, that, that is, that is what was committed. And so I don't know why I have to fight so hard every time this issue comes up. I just, I'm, I really am tired of the conversation.
Okay, don't, don't get upset. Did.
What is this?
Didn't I mention something about a men's commission too in all this?
Yes, years ago.
I mean, as we're talking about expanding a commission that's serving women, and I'm serious about this. We have no services dedicated to men. That's a discussion that, that we're going to have to have at some point, funding and all that. But I mean, I want to throw my, throw it in with my, throw it in my aquatic center also as a, as something I'd like to look at.
That's, that's on the list.
Motion, by the way.
I have to review. How long ago was that?
So March 18, moved by councilmember Najarian, seconded by Brotman. Regarding the powers and responsibilities, the council directs the city manager and city clerk to identify funding and resources needed to assign a full-time position dedicated to the commission. The council further directs the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Glendale Municipal Code provisions pertaining to the commission's powers and responsibilities to include regular programming based on policy recommendations, based on the commission's report on the status of women and girls, and the city's workforce demographic reports, engaging in community partnerships and fundraising, and increasing the frequency of regular meetings from quarterly meetings to monthly, 12 meetings per year. And eyes are, oh.
And I don't dispute that. The city clerk has brought that to my attention a couple of times. And as she handed you copy of the motion, that's the fact. The ordinance, according to Mr. Garcia, is drafted. It will come back to council for adoption, consideration of adoption. And if it's going to require, I, I understand the direction, but if it's going to require a full-time staff, we'll hire a full-time staff. If we can handle all of the expanded powers and programming with three-quarter of a person or half a position.
With all due respect, Mr. Galanian, you're insulting my intelligence and what the direction of this council was. So if you, we can keep going.
Can you read the first part of it? Because it says to look for funding.
Identify funding and resources to, needs to assign a full-time position dedicated to commission.
And that's what they're doing. They're trying to identify funding.
So it can be part of this budget.
It didn't say to be part of the budget.
You are, you've started that process.
You are in a conversation, waiting on additional information.
Let's move on.
Thank you. Five-year forecast. So with that conversation with respect to council requests that weren't funded in this budget, this is a quick overview or a review of what our five-year forecast actually looks like. And I have another slide immediately after this that shows what it looks like by including the parking fees as part of a revenue, a revenue source. So as we had previously discussed very quickly, we're looking at adopting our 2425 budget with a $13.5 million deficit after, I'm sorry, with a $4.9 million deficit after we've identified about $8.6 million in one-time budget balancing strategies. And looking at 2526, we started off with a $34.3 million deficit. We've identified $20.6 million in proposed reductions, some of them recurring, some, most of them one-time. And we will be proposing adopting with 13.7 million. If we were to take into account our parking fee amendment, which we plan on making part of our budget staff report and hearing and adoption, that would bring in roughly about $1 million a year in revenue. So that means we'd be adopting with a $12.7 million deficit this year. But because most of those are one-time maneuvers, you see that future years, you still have a 30-plus million dollar structural imbalance moving forward. Really quickly, ending charter of reserve, nothing to be concerned about at this stage of the game with respect to 2425, 2526. But if, unless we fix this issue permanently, not with one-time fixes, but either expenditure reductions to some reasonable degree, but some significant revenue enhancements and/or financial maneuvering, if you will. Essentially, you're talking about refinancing existing debt in some manner to be able to, to fix this long-term. You'd be in quite a bit of trouble starting in '27, '28, where your reserves would be in the $50 million range, very, very close to what your minimum charter required balance of 46 million at that, in that particular year would be. So I'm going to kind of breeze through what's driving the $34.5 million implication or, or budget implications. While we saw an increase in our property tax of about 1.2 million, we also saw some significant decreases in sales tax, utility users tax, building and planning fees, and landfill host tipping fees over at Shoal Canyon Landfill. Of note here, something that concerns us is that we still are identifying revenue in the next couple of years for, from Shoal Canyon. That revenue to the tune of about $7 million a year will go away sometime around 2029 when the landfill closes permanently. So that is yet another challenge that we know we face moving down, moving down this path. On the appropriation side, we saw increases in our non-discretionary maintenance and operation budgets across the general fund. There was about $2.5 million in salary adjustments with respect to reallocations of existing staff from one position to the other, and the, the need to bring people, new hires from the outside in at a higher step than what we budget, essentially having to compete with what's out there in the market at the present time. If you recall, with respect to vacancy savings, last year, we said we were going to recognize $9.6 million in vacancy savings by holding them vacant. But this year, we essentially moved forward and filled about $7.2 million worth of those vacancies, which obviously had a $7.2 million hit to our bottom line. GPD overtime and MNO, that's the $4 million that we talked about in a little bit more detail about 45 minutes ago. And there's another million dollars in MNO in the police department. And then just some smaller increases to service levels. Capital outlay was really some defibrillators and turnouts for the fire department. And the $700,000 in medical insurance premiums is what we experienced above and beyond what we had originally calculated. It's not that we were off on our calculations. We actually chose to take a different path with our renewal this year, choosing to lock in a rate for 19 months as opposed to 12 months. The reason for that being that it aligns us with the calendar year. So if we were ever to want to look at switching over to a different medical insurance pool, we'd be aligned with what the vast majority of pools have in terms of their open enrollment period. Some of the things that we did to help balance the structural deficit, this was really the low-hanging fruit, the easy way out, if you will. We canceled $2 million transfer to the fleet fund. A little history on that. The fleet fund had essentially been where we were taking from in previous years to help balance previous year budgets. Last year, we got to a point where unless we had infused the fleet fund with some significant cash, we would be in the, in the negative as of last year. We did that, and then we had put in about $2 million a year ongoing for fleet. This year, when we had to go look at, at pots of money to try to help fix our budget one time, we identified that we could probably forego the $2 million transfer to the fleet fund solely because vehicles, coincidentally, we have about $2 million worth of vehicles that we ordered, haven't necessarily been delivered yet. So we're kind of in that float period. So is it long-term, is it a long-term solution? Absolutely not. Is it something that we're going to? Is it something that we're going to have to rely upon this year? That would be our recommendation as a one-time fix. Canceling our transfer to the CIP fund, similar situation. When we decided not to transfer $10 million to the CIP fund for next year, we still had quite a number of needs. So, what we did was we went back and rebalanced 2425, deferred, delayed, eliminated some projects that we talked about last week over to 2526 and beyond. So, we do have some CIP requests for 2526, but that comes at a cost of what we wrote off for 2425 or deferred into future years. Cancelled our transfer to the Building Maintenance Fund. Again, this was one time. It's about $800,000 we thought that we could identify to help our 2526 budget. Departmental MNO and hourly reductions. This was the efforts or the results of efforts from all of our departments. We had everybody in a room for quite a number of hours over a series of days a few months ago. And together, we were able to identify about $4.2 million in reductions in maintenance and operation and hourly salaries without impacting our existing staffing levels. And then there was a defunding of about 33 vacant positions within the general fund and some non-general fund, but the vast majority, I want to say 30 or 31 of them, were in the general fund. That saved us about $3.6 million in the general fund. I'm not going to go through every one of these. We went through this list during Budget Study Session Number Two as I was making presentation on behalf of each of the different departments. This was on that profile slide. It shows what we were able to identify in terms of savings on the MNO side within the departments. All in all, I believe this came out to about 4... 4.2 million? 4.2 million from memory. Yes, 4.2 million. There are the 33 vacant positions that we defunded. That was our effort to try to... Basically, our largest driver in the general fund is salaries. And knowing that any further cuts on the MNO side would be to program services and impact actual filled positions, it was prudent for us to go and look at our vacant positions. These are positions that we took out of department budgets. We defunded them. We still have them in the budget book as an authorized headcount with $0 associated with them. Departments can't go and fill these unless we identify a funding source down the road and the city manager releases them back to that particular department. Towards the tail end of the presentation here, last week, we had a lot of information that we could have shared with the city council with respect to both our general fund CIPs and our citywide CIPs. What we've attempted to do is really whittle down the conversation into areas where there may be opportunity for consideration by this council to loosen up or release some previously appropriated funding to help offset the remaining $12.7 million deficit. We did this not because we're necessarily recommending it or identifying what the value of each of these projects is. This was really based on sort of the collective feedback we were receiving from council that maybe there's opportunities to not move forward with some previously approved projects and repurpose those funds. I think it would be appropriate, and I'll do this very quickly, to go over each of these and just give you a quick, half-sentence description of what each is. That way, if there's a desire to look into it or ask additional questions, you'll have some context. The Brand Lighting renovation is lighting upgrades at the Brand Libraries Art Gallery. We say this is... Let me back up. Every project you see over the next couple of slides is projects that were either previously authorized or there's a request for new appropriation, where we've only expended less than 10% of the authorized funds, which means we really haven't started these projects yet. We're not going to have significant impact by not moving forward with them. And these are ones that don't necessarily have any safety, security, or regulatory implications. There's a whole host of other projects that we could also consider, but those do have some safety, security, and regulatory implications. The only one on this list that does have some safety issues that we're concerned about would be the Brand Library renovation. That has to do with lighting in the Brand Libraries Art Gallery. There is an electrical issue. It's currently completely offline. We don't utilize it. If we decided to take this off, then what we would do is we would get Public Works to go in and take a closer look, see if we can sort of Band-Aid it for a period of time. But it certainly is something we would have to do long-term. Glorietta Field Light Replacements has to do with replacing the LED lights at Glorietta Field, something that I know council members have received a number of complaints over the past couple of years. The Tennis Concession Building renovation is over at Glorietta as well. That project is currently in the design phase. And essentially, we've outgrown the capacity of that facility. Grandview Library Solar is solar panel installations on top of Grandview Library. This is not a part of, but it's connected to the Building Forward Grant that we had received a couple of years ago. Housing land acquisition. There's about $3.3 million remaining in the balance for housing land acquisition. It is what it is. It's for acquisition of land for housing development opportunities. The Maryland Street and Alley Improvements, that's essentially the Artach Paseo project. We have about $8.7 million remaining in that project, but even after the negotiations that concluded a couple of days ago, we're $3.75 million short for that project. So, if we're going to move forward with the Artach Paseo, we're going to need another $3.7 million to complete it. So, that may be something for council to consider. Outdoor Gym Shelter, small number, but that essentially was an outdoor gym or shelter for fitness equipment at Fire Station 24. Sports Complex, Field 3 Artificial Turf. That project is currently in the permitting phase, even though we haven't really expended much money out of it. It is slated to start in November of 2025. Active Transportation Implementation, that's a new ask of $1 million. This essentially has to do with improvements that are in line with pedestrian safety plan and the bicycle trans... I'm sorry, pedestrian transportation plan and the bicycle transportation plan. No actual projects associated with it at this time, but it would be related to roads and projects that would encourage more active modes of transportation. Parking Lot Improvements, that's specifically for Lot 34. That's the one next to Babe Herman across from Canyatta. Thou would resurface, replace meters at that facility. And I'm almost done. The Pacific Natural Grass Project, that's over at Pacific Edison Park. We're at 90% design on this particular project, and we anticipate that construction, after the bidding process, would begin sometime in spring of 2026. So, sometime about 12 months from now. Central Park is the big one. We have about $12.7 million remaining in the balance of that project. This is the facility adjacent to the upcoming Armenian America Museum. The challenge with this is we're still $7.2 million short of the engineer's estimate if the bids come in where we believe they would. Those bids are due June 25th, a day after we adopt budget. So, it's kind of a wait-and-see game. We have applied for a $5.9 million grant for this project. If we were to be successful in the $5.9 million, we'd only be short about $1.3 million for that. So, one way or another, we're going to need additional funding for Central as well.
On that topic, Mayor Najarian, council members, I did receive a call from Congressperson Friedman yesterday, as a matter of fact, who wanted to inform us that she has put in a request for an earmark for the Central Park project around $3 million. So, hopefully, fingers crossed, that materializes, and we can take advantage of it.
So, I suspect there might be some conversation to be had on the CIP, but it really leads into my last slide here, which is kind of what are the next steps? And this is really intended... Sure?
So, the... Use the reserves for the remaining $12.7 mil. These department reductions and the defunded vacant positions, is that the 12 million or is that part of the larger number?
No, everything that we have proposed here... And anytime you see a proposed defunding of vacant positions or proposed departmental reductions, that's how we got down to the $12.7 million.
Okay.
So, if we were not to move forward with, I don't know, summer camp hotel voucher program, for example, and said, "No, we want to put that back into the budget", we just dug a $210,000 hole.
Mayor, I have some questions on the staffing, if I may. I had sent some emails to some of the department heads asking to like explain what the position does and how that fits into the larger... But I hadn't done them for all. If the library director, if you can come up... Sorry, I know we were supposed to meet, and I didn't have a chance to. The...
City manager? I'm sorry, are you aware of these?
I'm not aware of these emails. I don't believe, Mayor Najarian.
So, I think whenever, as a general statement, whenever there's questions asked... I thought we went through this. Whenever there's a question asked of a department head, that it go through the city manager as well. It's not fair to any department singularly answer questions from a council member.
I'm happy to... I'm not hiding anything, Mr. Najarian.
It's not a matter of hiding. It's a matter of process. I don't think... I'm not saying anyone's hiding anything.
None of you have ever met with any staff and have asked any staff any questions?
Without the city manager, no. No, I never have.
You've never asked questions to department heads?
Without the city manager's knowledge, I have never, in my 20 years.
Well, I...
No, just general questions. You've never gone to a staff member and asked like, "Hey, can you explain this to me"?
If I may explain, if I want to meet with any department head to ask questions, because I don't see them on the streets in general. If I want to go meet with them and ask questions or request things, I will let the city manager, as well as assistant city manager, know. Or even if I text them, I'll CC them as well, or I add them to my text, and I tell them that I want to meet with whoever, any department head, and this is what I'm going to talk about. I'll let them know. They don't have to be there.
I haven't met. I've sent emails asking for...
I'm not saying you have met. I'm just answering your question. If I want to go meet with the department... Like, I met with the GWP director. I'll let them know. And they scheduled a meeting in the city. And I... But we don't ask any questions that I wanted. And he spent a lot of time with me because I wanted to understand where we stand on different issues. Same thing with Mr. Calvert. Every time I want to meet with him, I'll let them know that I'm meeting with him and these other things. And we have monthly meetings anyways, so... That's the way I...
That's the process that I've used. Mari schedules the meetings. These were... I needed clarification. So, I'm asking... I'm just... I want to get a clarification on... Because I think one of the items that we had previously talked about was just arts programming. And you had noted that there was only one staff member that handles the entire like planning of like arts and entertainment activities?
So, we have our Principal Administrator of Arts and Culture, who is our full-time salaried personnel that handles arts and culture. And then we have an hourly person that also helps to support at about 32 hours a week.
Are any of those part of this reductions list?
Neither of those are part of this reductions list.
Okay, so the...
Because those positions are currently filled.
So, the assistant director position doesn't help with any of those?
No.
Okay. Okay. And then the community service coordinator position, Mr. Galanian, what department is that from?
Community Service Coordinator, Parks and Community Services.
Do you have a general sense of how you want to...
Well, I'm not sure what the... Are you seeing whether those cuts are necessary or whether they should not be defunded?
Well, so, I think one of the things I am taking into consideration is our priorities as a city. And I had spoken to this previously. I think it was the first session or the second. But the building code specialist, senior permit specialist, planner, senior building, I mean, this is all like raising red flags for me for impacts on permitting, which still are in the works of us doing better. I think I had made comments about I cannot support anything that gets rid of public safety and especially communications managers for the police department because that is a very out-facing position. And I don't want to risk leaving a void when it comes to public safety, especially during the times that we're living in now. And I've already, you know, made some comments about how I feel with the hourly worker. There's a very big difference. I know there's some other communications and legislative affairs cuts here that look... With all due respect, if we didn't have Mr. Lorenz on retainer during the fires, I have no idea how we were going to go about, as a city, communicating with our public during the wildfires and the coordination of all of that. And we seem to live in a time where there is a dire need for a city of our size to have not just individuals that are in communications, because there's degrees of that, but really understands the depth of political communications and being able to cover ground for all of the departments and being the lead in that. And so, I don't know, you know, how long Mr. Lorenz will be with us, but he's not a staff member. But anything related to community outreach, communications, and out-facing, we are the fourth-largest city in LA County. Not to have a position like that, and then separately, not to have one for PD. I just... I can't... These are very big concerns that I have on those. The rest of them, you know, I...
Should we ask the city manager to find funding? To see if there's funding?
Well, I was going to...
Perhaps a bigger question. Let me just interrupt for all my colleagues. Rather than going through and zeroing in on one particular position that may perform one particular function, I think the more appropriate action is to go to the city manager and express, as you did, Mr. City Manager, in the event of an emergency where we have to coordinate communications, what ability are we going to have in this next budget to do so? Because I see there's a reduction in one of these particular staffers. And then he would then go through, determine whether there's any overlap in the departments that can address that issue, and then respond to us. Because I hate, you know... I mean, what if I said, you know, "Pick one, custodial worker"? Why are we getting rid of that custodial worker? Because, you know, my carpet isn't vacuumed the whole time. The more appropriate... And that's a very minutia. But the more appropriate discussion is, Mr. City Manager, are we sure that we're going to be able to maintain the council chambers in the way that we're accustomed and should be? Can you address that and get back to me? Rather than go through one by one, because that's not our job. We're micromanaging at this point by going through line by line on these positions, in my opinion.
So, I was going to recommend that... I had also recommended this a couple of sessions ago, that instead of going through these additional cuts and programming, looking at the larger capital improvement projects and what we put on pause that helps cover. And I have no issue with putting a pause on the Maryland Street project, which is $8 million, almost $9 million plus-plus, and saying, "You know what? I don't want to get rid of public safety. I don't want to get rid of folks that are handling permits." That is the strategy, and that is up to us, Mr. Najarian. So, I... And not that I want to get rid of it, but one of the comments I also made was, "Okay, well, it's costing us $9 million, almost $9 million now. If we put this on pause and have our finance director, whoever it may be, go look at financing options for us to see if, hey, there's an opportunity for us to fund this a different way, for us to fund this a different way, where it's not nine million dollars out of next year's budget. Maybe we extend that out for whatever financing opportunities are available through IBank or whatever Glendale Credit Union or whatever it may be. So, it doesn't cost us much more five years from now, right? So, those are strategies, and those are part of our conversations to, to direct staff.
So, I believe, I, I fully support everything that you were, you were saying, until you got to the point of developing a financial strategy and discussing that with the Department of Finance. That should go directly to the city manager, accompanied with your concern. It's like, hey, I really want to see Arts Oak Street in the near future. Are there any strategies we can develop, rather than going to the Department of Finance and saying, hey, why don't we do this, put a bond out, refinance, et cetera?
I have not gone to anybody, I'm having a conversation here. I'm saying, maybe that's a strategy we take.
I was, I was stuck on those emails that you had sent that were going back and forth.
May I ask a question?
Can I have you come back to what I'm saying?
You're back, it's your floor, you have the floor, I was just making...
I'm asking you to listen to what I'm actually saying, instead of...
Councilmember.
You said that to Mr. Garfettian about listening, he got upset, I'm not going to get upset, but...
What do you mean?
I devote...
I did not go to any...
I never get upset.
I'm literally, I'm making a suggestion right now, that instead of we cut, I haven't had a conversation with them, instead of cutting these positions, us looking at different opportunities through the capital improvement project.
Can I ask a question?
Well, that's, so if you, if you turn that way and say that, I'm 100% behind you.
Mr. Mayor?
As long as it's directed to the city manager.
We need three votes in order to do this.
I want to hear what he says before I vote on something.
Can I ask a question before Mr. City Manager or something? These are, these are the, the positions that are vacant at this time, right? They're not, we don't have someone...
Yes, there are no bodies in this position.
No bodies, and it's not that we're getting rid of a body in there. These are the positions that are, it's, it's, the funding is allocated for, but there are no employees there. So, it's not that we're getting rid of our, we have a communications manager and we're getting rid of it, or assistant parking manager we're getting rid of. These are open positions, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
These are, these are vacant positions that...
Okay, but vacant positions, uh, I can just only point to, uh, because I know Kevork that was working in PD, and it was the communications person there, now has moved into CDD, right? The reason that it's vacant is because Kevork moved, and that position hasn't been filled yet, and there's a hiring freeze right now. Not that it wasn't there. So, again, what I'm, I'm trying to see if there's, then I will turn it to Mr. Galanian. Do you, us putting some of these other projects on pause, so we don't eliminate positions as a strategy?
Mayor Najarian, Councilmember Asatrian. Let me start off by stating that these positions, the 33 positions that you see as being proposed to be defunded, uh, was not done arbitrarily. Uh, some allegations are floating around. This was after careful consideration, hours of conversations with department heads. You obviously understand my challenge. We have a structural imbalance of over $34 million. The vast majority, again, as you know, vast majority of our expense is labor, is staffing. We don't make gadgets, we're in the service business, and naturally, the majority of our cost is going to be staffing and labor. In general fund, over 66% is public safety. So, through careful, uh, laser-focused, strategic, many, many hours of conversation with all the department heads, how do we close that gap? The, after going through what Mr. Taktalian noted of the programs that really don't sum up to a significant amount, the, the natural focus is on staffing and cost of staffing. These, we have come up, uh, collectively with the department heads through conversations with me. And they have agreed, yeah, it's not the ideal situation to be in. Nobody wants to be in this situation. They all need these positions, they're all warranted. However, given the situation we're in, could we defer filling these positions for the time being? And the answer's been, these, these came from the department heads. And with agreement back and forth, again, collectively with the entire executive team. Can we defer this for the time being, until such time that hopefully our budget situation improves? That hopefully they will be staff members in each department seeking grants. We've had started conversation with IBank. These are all the venues that we're trying to tap into to be able to find finding, not just for any individual, uh, positions that was mentioned, but hopefully all 33. We go through the ebbs and flows. Sometimes we, we're, we're in a good position, we can fill them, sometimes we're not. So, this is an exercise we've gone through. The other point I wanted to emphasize is termination, cancellation of capital improvement projects. Those are one-time funds. These positions, if we hire until such time that they're eliminated, it's in perpetuity. So, to take money, now, I'm not saying we shouldn't cancel or eliminate or defer or reduce some of the capital improvement projects. That would help one time, with one year's budget, to fill through to, um, appropriate budget for these positions is going to require extensive sources of revenue, steady flow of revenue. So, to take the, the capital improvement projects for, to, to balance the staffing needs, it's, it's not going to work. So, we have a hiring freeze in place, as was stated. If we hopefully are successful in generating, identifying, establishing sources of revenue, then individual respective departments will come to me, will make their case. If we can fund these positions, by all means, we will release them. We have, uh, we have secured the headcounts, we're not changing those. It's just going to be a matter of processing the funding source. That's, that's where we stand currently.
Okay, so, the ones that you have on the list now, if the department has come to you and say, hey, we need it, it's still up for...
We need it, and we have the funding.
We need it, and we have the funding.
I mean, they all need it, they all need it.
Well, I don't, I mean, no, you guys, you reclassify plenty of positions, right, throughout? It might be that, I don't know, uh, you needed somebody that was doing community outreach, and now you've combined them with community outreach.
Absolutely.
Well, I know they're like listed as analysts, so it's really hard to tell with the...
This is, yeah, that's true, Councilmember Asatrian. This is in, I, I, and I've, uh, I've encouraged and I've directed department heads to take this as an opportunity to look at the current structure, and is there some creative ways of perhaps, I don't need this position that now became vacant, I can shift the funds from that position to, let's say, community outreach associate, because, in, in the opinion of the police chief, that is more important right now as opposed to, and I'm not trying to devalue any other position, this position that became vacant. I could, I can live, according to Chief Sir, he can say, I can live with not filling this position, but take that funding and put it towards this other position that I, it's more important to me currently.
So, back to my original question, so for example, the Arts Oak projects, that's eight, nine million dollars, right?
Right.
If we wanted, I mean, that is part of a, more of a strategy or how we go about this, right?
Correct.
What if we did say, you know what, um, come back and, you know, if we're willing to put that on pause, right? Come back and tell us which of these are, I don't want to start making cuts where, where we don't have to, right? And so, I'm willing to, like, sacrifice the capital improvement project or look at a way that we're funding it in a different way. And in the meantime, again, we are now approving revenue sources that are going to be coming back, that are supposed to be priority, so, kind of moving at the same time?
Understood, understood, Councilmember Asatrian. Uh, let's say we, we terminate or put a pause on the Arts Oak project, and we don't have to spend eight million dollars. Eight million dollars is going to pay for, uh, pick a library assistant, let's say, 100,000 a year, right? So, once that eight million dollars expended, then we don't have the funding to pay for that library assistant after the depletion of that funding. So, again, capital improvement, we can realize savings, but it's only one time. It can pay for a few years, a couple of years of, if it's a police officer or pick any of these positions, so it's only a temporary fix. What would help us with canceling or putting a pause on a capital improvement project is now we don't dip into the, our reserve as much as the, we have to do it right now as it stands if we move forward with that capital improvement project.
But we're not taking into account the revenue sources that would be coming, right? I mean, I know all you can do is have what's in front of you, but we did approve those based off of the estimated numbers, and we can be extremely conservative in that.
Right.
But still take those into account.
And, and some of, can you put the revenue sources up? And some of those are, as you know, are going to require putting on the ballot and voter approval.
Right.
The, the big one. Right? Public safety impact fee, as was stated, we will proceed with implementing that. It's going to generate 100 and...
Forty-five thousand.
Hundred and forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand. You won't even pay for a library assistant, right?
Like the digital billboards, just the, just the ones from Metro, we were looking at the, what they had given us from Metro was about three to four million dollars.
Yeah, and, and again, sure.
Pickpots.
No, absolutely, but once they're in place, right? Then collectively with the department heads, what do we use this funding for? Do we, are filling those defunded positions more important than taking that money and putting towards, um, as an example, renters assistant program? Or, or low-income utility bills, right? That's the, uh, that's the competing interest and demands that we have, absolutely. Once they come in, once we, uh, realize those, those funding sources, then we'll have those conversations, come back to council and request that you appropriate it accordingly.
Okay, and then the, the 33 positions that you have listed, obviously there's a whole lot more that's not on this doc, but there's vacancies right now.
Correct, there's 33 positions we're in general fund. We also have vacancies, for example, in GWP that are not general fund.
No, as an example, they're not part of that list that you provided, but there's a vacancy right now. You're not looking to cut that position, right?
Correct.
So, what is the process for that? And I said this during the first session, I, what I don't want to end up in a situation where I'm thinking that we have, you know, staffed up on police, right? And then come at the end of next year, because there was like vacancies or people left, people retired, and then we learned that we lost like, I don't know, 10 or 15, and they weren't hired, but they were never part of this list, so what's the process?
The process is going to, to remain the same. The department heads will make a case of the, the critical nature of this position that needs to be backfilled, and then we move forward with it. They, they, they haven't been defunded.
Okay, and that, those are, is the, is like council priorities taken into account during that decision-making process?
Council priorities, as well as the, within the operational necessity of the department, yeah.
Okay, so, if, okay.
Mr. Taktalian, anything to add that hasn't been said?
Yeah, I don't, we don't need to, there, I had a lot to add, but Mr. Galanian said a lot of it. The only thing I would add in terms of the specific, I would just want to offer a more specific response to Councilmember Asatrian in terms of the process. It is a three-step process, it took us a couple of weeks to implement this, after we went ahead and proposed freezing these positions a couple of months ago. The, the, in order for any vacant position, a position becomes vacant today, goes through a three-step process, it's a single form, it's all done through the city's financial system. There's three sets of eyes on it at this point. HR gets to view it to make sure that the position in fact is vacant, that it is within the department, it's available to fill. Finance now gets eyes on it before the city manager's office to ensure that funding indeed is available, specifically what department it's in. The fact that it is going to be long-term funding opportunity as opposed to just one-time funds. And then it comes to the city manager's office for that final approval. It's, it's a little bit different than what it was previously, but had that been the process 12 months ago, and we were doing that as we were trying to fill the positions we said we would hold vacant, we probably would have ended up with a little bit of a, of a different approach or a different outcome in that, in that particular instance.
And then are there timelines for this, or?
The immune system is extremely quick. It's as quickly as somebody gets it in their queue, reviews it, and approves it. Technically, it could go for, it could be processed in as little as two days, depending on how long it's had in someone's queue.
No, do you have internal timeline, like, the department makes the requests through the system? How quickly that decision is made? And I think what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, I'm just going to be very honest here, and I think Mr. Brotman noted this during the first session of, I just want to have an honest conversation here, so, because I, I'm not, this isn't like us fighting against each other, this is us working together. There is a fund that's been created that is specifically for those vacancies, right? That was shown, it was one of the line items.
Okay.
And we've, throughout these budget discussions, we have talked about how we have been utilizing the vacancy savings to kind of cover up the, the real financial situation that we're in. What I'm trying to avoid is that we continue on that practice, and we come back, or that fund and that line item in the budget starts to grow, because internally, those positions are not be, while they're not cut, they're not being approved in hopes of continuing this practice of vacancies and using vacancies as the, the method in which we try to balance our budget as, as best we can.
No, I hear you.
I think that ties our hands with the urgency for revenues and bringing in revenue streams and being creative on, um, really what our budget actually looks like versus the strategies we're using for it.
I hear you, and what I actually, I'm just going to repeat what I heard you say, is you don't want to see the citywide vacancy numbers increase as a method of balancing the budget. And I think what I hear, also hearing the city manager say is that's not the case. Those positions aren't frozen. Yeah, there's a hiring freeze, but that hiring freeze essentially means that it's, it's going through a review process at this point, it's not a hard hiring freeze.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Brotman, did you have comments?
Yeah, are we, we're going through a number of different comments?
We have to, we have to end at 12, we have guests from our sister city waiting for us, but let's go ahead and make comments.
Well, I mean, I just want to say on this question of vacant positions, I'm not in favor of substituting a CIP saving for funding what's a permanent position. Our, our financial deficit, our structural deficit is, you know, running many years into the future. Unless we get the voters to approve a sales tax increase, unless we get some of these other sources of revenue in place, we're going to be looking at furloughs and layoffs. So, this is not the time to be bringing new people on board. And so, I, I support holding off on these positions for at least a year and maybe two years until we, we know that our situation is, is more sound. Just a few, um, general comments, let me go to, I'm sorry, but, um, I wanted to talk about some of the departmental reductions. But I guess I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to hold those. I, I am, um, not eager to, but I'm willing to sacrifice the Maryland Street Arts Oak project. I'm willing to sacrifice the Sports Complex Field 3 artificial turf. I, you know, I don't know about the brand lighting, I don't know about the Glorieta tennis concession, but I think we should look at those too. And, um, as far as the, the Glorieta lighting, I know there's been a neighborhood problem. 500,000 seems like a lot of money, I know we're talking about replacing the poles and everything. Maybe there's a cheaper way to do it with just bulbs, I would like us to look into that. But I think we should be able to pull a good 10 million out of these capital improvement projects. Now, if we do that, and, oh, and I want to say the Central Park project, I don't think we cannot do that, I think we have to do that. What I would say is if we, if we can pull 10 million out of CIP, what I'd like to make sure is that we're not doing anything on infrastructure, on deferring infrastructure that is going to cause a deterioration in our infrastructure and cost more in the future, as I've said before. And I think, you know, we've committed to maintaining a certain pavement condition index. I don't want to be pulling money out that's going to deteriorate, uh, cause... I don't want to be pulling money out that's going to deteriorate, cause a deterioration in that index, and then cause us to have to do more structural, deeper structural work in the future on our roads, that potentially now could involve just some slurry seal. And the same with our tree canopy, I'm very concerned about moving our maintenance schedule from six years to seven. I know it seems like a small amount, but we did this back when we were in our last financial crisis. We, you know, reduced our planning, we reduced our maintenance, and we lost 10% of our tree canopy, and we're trying to climb out of that hole now. I don't want to start getting back into that hole, because trees are some of the most cost-effective infrastructure that a city can be developing. So if we free up some CIP, I'd like to make sure it goes into shoring up our tree maintenance, and making sure we stick to our commitments on our, keeping our roads, our road condition at the level we've said we want to keep it. I might have one other thing, Mr. Mayor, I just want to check.
All right. Paul, I'll come back to you.
Okay, okay.
Let me go to Mr. Garpetti.
First, I'd like to add to your aquatics center. Is it on, yeah? Maybe an NWSL mini-stadium, which is the National Women's Soccer League. I've been talking about this for many, many years. It could be combined, and there are funding sources, I'm sure, out there that are active. Council colleague, Ms. Satrian, can go find sources for us, some sort of grants for us, but I think that will put Glendale on the map. But in general, we need to be very conservative, very conservative. We don't know what the future holds. There are so many cuts in here that I don't like, but they're necessary. The Maryland Avenue Project, that $8.7 million, if we not do that project, we can reduce that from our deficit instead of $12.7 million, bring it down to almost $4 million. So, we don't spend it anywhere, it would sit in our general fund reserve. So if we need it in the future, near future, the money is there. So if we can reduce that, that would be, I think that would be my preference. Central Park Project, it's becoming more expensive and expensive on daily basis, I don't know, we are, we have about $12 million, but we need another $7.2 million. It's almost $20 million more that we need to do that project. I don't know, maybe we should look into, if that is not achievable, and we purchase other land, for parklands, basically, maybe that could go towards development of those parklands, because when we purchase a property, we need to develop that too. It's just some ideas to think about. But as far as cutting back the, or not doing the Field 3 of Sports Complex, that is not the right decision. I think we need to do that, because those fields are heavily, heavily used on daily basis, not only for playing soccer, but also for practices. They divided in four different small fields and practice on daily basis. So that is a must. As far as tree canopies goes, I agree, I think if we look into the money we spent on other programs, a tree costs the city about $1,000. If you do a bulk purchase, maybe it would go down to $750 or $500. A million dollars can plant 1,000 trees, and you can catch up really quick. So I think that's something that our Parks Department can take a look at. So how can we reduce the base cost of purchasing and planting a tree? So we look at in the near future, the programs that we have, and we're pushing forward, and maybe eliminate some of that, and put the money in planting trees, which is the most environmentally friendly move that we can have. That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just my last two things, is one, I agree with Councilmember Garpetti, we need to be very conservative, and I would be happy if we were able to reduce that drawdown from our reserve, if we can cancel any of this CIP, with the, you know, the caveats I said before about roads and trees. The only other thing I wanted to put on the table is that if we have the capacity, I would be interested in trying to increase the transfer from GWP slightly, maybe $1 million or $2 million, for the purpose solely of deepening and widening the low-income bill support. I think that's something we want to do. I agree with Councilmember Garpetti, and that's an important thing. I don't want to do it at the expense of the other programs in the public benefit charge, you know, category, but if we can afford to pull some more money out, and use that to support, you know, low income, maybe expand that program, I would like us to look into doing that.
I just have one question.
Okay, we're on our final lap of the Indy 500s.
So, some of those that you had on the list, we didn't really give direction on, but it was part of a conversation for us to have that during the budget discussions, whether it was the council staffing, or the, most recently, the rent subsidy program that came to us. If we're not having this conversation now, and we're not giving clear direction, and then there's budget adoption, if, so would we continue to have...
We need direction, Councilmember Satrian.
Okay, but if we don't come to a decision on that at this time, is this something then that's brought up separately during your regular, again, I mean, a lot of these were just actually items that were supposed to be coming back to council as items anyway, so...
Right.
I just know that the council staffing was brought forth by Councilmember Brotman.
Correct.
To have that conversation, and then the small business assistance, I think was us just looking at ways to help with, whether it's rent, or any other assistance we can give, but that was supposed to be, for example, an item that comes back.
Yeah.
And then...
Yes, Councilmember Satrian.
Some of these don't even need to come, like the public piano program, it was a recommended program. I think staff had come back with, "Oh, it's going to cost us about $200,000 a year," and then I had said, "Well, it doesn't have to be, we can create partnerships with Downtown Glendale Association and so forth," right? So, but those are all things that can, again, they're separate items that I guess would require for us to have additional discussions.
Councilmember Satrian, you are correct, some of these items, this is the research we've done, these are the pros and cons, oh, by the way, we don't have the funding for it, council, we didn't put it in the request for council to be, to adopt it as part of the budget. If you still want to move forward with it, we need to appropriate funding.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple brief comments specifically. I am in favor of looking into increasing the transfer. I would like to leave open as to how that funding would be used, whether it would go to, let's say, backfill the deficit of sales tax for a short period of time, or have that discussion, that's something that I think would require a discussion. We can't, it's already baked into the COSA.
We've already looked into that. What we are looking at is transferring, I'm going to look over at Corina, $29.6 million for 2425, when we adopt a budget on June 24th. We've already had the conversation with GWP, and based on the timing of when the new rates are going to go effect, which is different than what the COSA said, but the increase in the usage that we're experiencing, they'll be able to hold us whole, or keep us whole, for what we had projected for '25, '26. Beyond that, there is no additional capacity to increase. So we'll go from $29.6 to about $32.5, $32.7, somewhere in that range, but that $32.7 for fiscal year '25, '26 has already been taken into account when we say we're going to end the year with a $12.7 million deficit.
Okay, well, come back to us at some point later, and give us some advice as to how we can make full use of what the voters of Glendale approved twice. The second point is, I definitely do not want to cannibalize our capital improvement budget for a couple reasons. That money is never going to get backfilled if we use Artsakh $8 million and put it to salaries in any way. Not only are we not going to get that money back again, or it'll be very difficult to, but the cost of the project itself is going to continue to increase. So I'm very hesitant to do anything like that. I'm not saying that's what we're saying we're going to do, but I'm concerned about that. Lastly, I want to speak to my colleagues and let them know that this has been a dynamic process, and I appreciate the comments and the frank discussion. I hope I didn't upset anyone in my remarks. Not all of us are getting what we want in this budget, and that's just the way life goes. However, if anybody intends on voting against this budget, please let me know ahead of time, because I will not look on that fondly, and it's just not fair to put us through, for any of us to be involved in such an extensive discussion of this budget, and then at the end not be happy because there aren't flags on Bran Boulevard, or whatever the particular item might be, and vote against it. I don't think that would be good. I'm not saying anyone would do that, but in different lifetimes, that has occurred. So, please, in this next two weeks, would you have a speaker or two? Okay. In this next two weeks, please direct your concerns to the city manager. I think due to this short period of time that we have left, he is going to be the best one to narrow down and focus your concern, and see if there's anything that can be done. We do have another discussion, of course, when it comes, it's open for discussion on June 24th, correct?
Yes, sir, it's a public hearing.
But it's pretty much baked, I mean, this is in the oven already. We do have a public speaker?
Yes, we have one caller, Mrs. Brooks, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just walked in, in case you discussed this already. Number one, is the document that you're looking at available to the public online in any way? Because you have information about what's going to be in the budget. And number two, given that Trump just signed an executive order, I guess in his mind, you know, ending the EV mandate in California, which I'm sure Newsom will take to court, I don't know how much money is in the budget for electric vehicles, because that won't be hopefully a mandate anymore. So to think about that, or to look at that, and otherwise, that's okay, and I hope everybody has a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for anyone interested, I have asked the city manager to go to the GWP, and perhaps give us a summary of what sort of executive orders and legislative action is coming down at the state and federal level. Yes.
When do we anticipate getting the budget adoption documents? Because obviously, we've been getting these, like, right, at least the slides, we've been getting them the day before, or the night before, and it makes it hard for us to look at things, and is there a timeline?
Yeah, when we publish the agenda for June, January, or, sorry, June 24th, council will have access to all the information that the public does.
So, for the week prior... Yeah, for the session or the budget hearing on the 24th, they will be a fairly extensive, comprehensive staff report. These four sessions, study sessions, did not have staff reports.
Right, so I'm asking, so are you going to be publish them on the Thursday before the Tuesday?
We will do our best. We have, again, a long list of items for the 24th, depending on the function of the departments, we'll do our best to publish it as soon as we can, hoping for it to be on Wednesday, like we make every effort, but no later than Thursday before the council meeting.
Okay. And you want us to direct whatever concerns we have with...
I think that's going to be the quickest...
I mean, I've made a lot of my comments.
But still, it's not over yet. I mean, if you guys have an issue...
I have raised my issues.
You can, you're certainly welcome to reiterate.
The mayor, I have been very open about it, so...
You can definitely reiterate them as...
I have not shifted from them.
Right. So, before we adjourn, I'd like to recognize guests that we have from our sister city of Gapon, correct? Or Martuni, you're Gapon. So, I understand they're young, young men and women who are here to learn about Glendale and see what we're all about, and you just caught the tail end of our budget session, study session. So the big show is in two weeks, but we've been discussing the details on how we spend our budget on an annual basis. So, welcome to the city of Glendale. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
You are adjourned.
I think so.
Trash cans, we need that. Custodial.[1745.11]